Follow me in the order. Thank you folks for being here tonight to see this nice summer today. I would like to call on County Manager Greg Wood to lead us in the indication, please.
That's great. No one bother, we just thank you for this lovely day you've given us. I just want to take a special opportunity just to thank you for the so many gracious and wonderful and good people that are in Harris County that I really had a chance to see demonstrated personally through, literally through the fire. And I just thank you for all those good folks. Thank you for these people that are on this dais that give their own time freely to make this place, this county, a better place for everyone. Pray tonight for wisdom and discernment in all their decisions. We thank you for those that protect us, the firemen, the police, and those that are serving in foreign lands. We just ask the blessing on this meeting tonight in Jesus' name we pray.
Amen. If you all please stand, I have to commit to allow a milk to leave us in the pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation of God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we have the meeting tonight, we have a special guest out here tonight that I would like to introduce to you, Ms. Megan Duke, who is the Economic Development Director for the city of West Point. She's been there a few months now. She is certainly going to be helping us a great deal with the development in the Northwest Harris Business Park, as well as helping with the growth and changes that are going on in West Point. Megan, we appreciate you being here tonight.
Thank you, sir.
Come back and visit us anytime. First argument of business is the minutes from the meeting of March 1. Do I have a motion? You approve.
Second.
Motion and a second discussion. All in favor, say if I raise my hand. Motion carries. Minutes are three. Here's some citizens. Mr. Ralph Stevens has signed up to talk about Melody Lakes Roads and Buses. Mr. Stevens?
Yes, sir.
Come sit at the table, please, sir. Just give us your name and your address.
Ralph Stevens, 1428 Melody Drive.
Right. Right ahead, tell us what you want us to hear.
Okay. The beginning with the buses coming in our second gate making right-hand turns. Now, they come in the first gate making right-hand turns and they can't make them stay on the road. And I got pictures of y'all sitting in a file where they're tearing up our roads. It's terrible out there.
Are these school buses you're talking about?
Yes, sir. And I had talked to Ms. Johnson, and she had somebody out there trying to take the pictures. But the buses still come in and make them hard right turns. And I've had Melody Drive and Birch, they got pictures, they got that road, they let the tour slap all the way across and it's about coming right to ground. I don't know why they started making the right-hand turns, changing direction of buses. She didn't stop. They beating our roads to death out there. Right-hand turns, and the streets are too narrow and they can't make them turns. You know, you got a bus, what, feet, feet?
Yeah.
About roads in there, you're doing good past two vehicles without getting off anyway. And the buses are trying to make right-hand turns, it's nobody can do it.
Let me make sure I understand, which entrance is this? One by the convenience store there?
Yeah, there by D and D.
Okay.
They started all coming in that way. Then she got some running on Red Oak, little bitty streets. Melody Drive was our biggest street in there and got the most asphalt. These other streets are paper thin and they beating them to death with the buses. I don't know why they started going. They used to come through Melody Drive and go right out. Now, they go up Red Oak, come down to Cherry, go up Black Gun, come back out on Melody. Elementary comes straight across Cherry and hit Melody Drive and come back around. But they don't do nothing, put the kids on the other side of the lane, so they don't have to walk real far. You know, we got a big parking lot up there. I was going to mention it to her, but she wouldn't have said that. And a shed and tables, plenty of parking. They blocking up side road where people can't get to work in the morning waiting for the buses. We got three now, just go to one, telling them. At one time, we didn't have one. We got three coming through. And they just tearing our roads to pieces.
So you're talking to Ms. Johnson, who's Ms. Johnson?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir.
She's Assistant Director of Community.
What's the school?
Yes, sir.
Talking about schools?
Mr. Wood asked me to call her, you know, she's the one I always need to talk to. And she said, "I ain't got nothing to do with the roads."
Well, she got something to do with the buses.
Yeah. I mean, Mr. Wood told me, I figured, you know, since the buses were tearing up school funds, we'd have to pay for our roads. Reason he asked me to speak.
When did they change the grounds?
I want to say about a year and a half ago.
So the high school year?
Yeah. Yeah. And, you know, they, them little back roads that went down Melody Valley, beating us to death. And then they're five days, we got three, and let's go to one. And their roads can't hold up to that.
Are most of those roads, Melody Lakes, private roads?
No, most of them county roads.
County roads, very few still.
Yeah, very few.
The dirt roads belong to the community. The blacktop roads belong to Harris County.
Where asphalt, do they?
Asphalt. Everything, they did it real slow. And I understand asphalt costs a lot of money. They could come in there when we turned it over to y'all, and blacktop everything in there, it cost too much. So as they blacktop them, the county took them. Over a period of years, that made the county roads.
Ninety-four to ninety-seven?
Yeah.
From ninety-four to ninety-seven?
Yeah. So, you know, I knew that was going to happen. I just appreciate the roads they've got and our buses that have been tearing up.
Greg, have you already talked to school folks about this?
No, not yet.
Attorney's right here next to you. I'll talk to Jimmy Martin about it and get him to get the transportation right.
Thank you, Mr. Wood.
We got, we got a big parking lot up there with the park department, we got a playground, got a shed where kids, it's raining. We can get them off the side of the street, open them back up, where people can get to work, about people parking on the side and blocking all the road goes through.
That shed, you tell me, is that where the fire department used to be?
Yes, sir. We put that playground in there.
Yeah.
And pick them table there. And all the buses could come in on top gate, make left-hand turns and do one stop and get them all going out. Is what I am.
We will, we will work with the school board and see, see what's what, and find out at least, and see then where we go from there. But I thank you for bringing that there.
Well, I'll give you these.
Yeah, if you would.
I got three more of them.
That would be cricket.
Yeah, I got them, Mark. You can leave that one road about being slapped out.
Thanks, sir.
Good. Well, appreciate it. Thank you, sir.
Thank y'all very much.
Any other questions? All right, the next item on the business, on the agenda is old business. You have any old business?
I do.
Ms. Langton?
What's the status of the Springsville Sower Study?
They were sent, all the job descriptions with the changes were overnighted to them last Thursday. They were all getting to me by Tuesday, Wednesday morning, then I had to collate them and copy them, and they went out Thursday, they got them Friday. And they were given until twenty-eight, a Monday?
Twenty-nine.
I think, is that a Monday?
Monday.
Yeah, to make the changes and return them to us, so that we can distribute and make arrangements for them to come down here and meet all the department heads and constitutional officers. Okay, thank you. That has not been set up yet, waiting for them to get them back to the center.
Thank you. Any other old business? Any new business? We have an appointment to the Public Improvements Authority. Representatives for the Development Authority, and on the Public Improvements Authority is currently Linda Dawson, who is no longer a member of the Development Authority. Therefore, the Development Authority has recommended that David King be appointed to complete Mrs. Dawson's term, which expires June 30th of this year. There is a side note, whether we want to consider going ahead, making that appointment and then considering Mr. King for the full term that begin, will begin July 1st of 2016.
I believe that we do both appoint him for the expiration of current term. This Dawson will have a full term beginning July 1st.
I see.
Motion and a second discussion. All in favor, please say if I raise my hand. Motion carries. I guess we, this is a good time to discuss this. We can do it. Yes.
Something in the movies unless you would.
You go right ahead.
Just wanted to know when we can, we approved the last pyatral statement, and it was for December. When can we expect?
I got it, I got it at five o'clock this evening, so I've had chats reviewing it. I want to look at it before I get to the meeting.
Okay. I don't want us to get as far behind as we were at one time.
I understand.
Thank you. And Mr. Chairman, under new business, I may, last week, there was a situation, a chicken plant had put in, I understand, some type of refrigeration unit that caused noise to go and disturb some folks on the backside of the plant. And County Manager, Mr. Woods, has spoken to some folks directly on that with the plant and can probably give us the most up-to-date information on it if you would. I think the problem is the process is being resolved.
Well, hopefully Scott will appreciate this. They normally put it on the roof, but they didn't want noise going your direction because they already thought they had enough going that direction apparently. So they put it behind the plant, so now it resonates and goes up the mountain. But they didn't realize how much noise it was going to make. And we got quite a few complaints. And I addressed it to the plant manager, and it went up to then Mr. Johnson, the next one up the food chain. And they, they went ahead and put a temporary housing around it this weekend, and it's already, it's attenuated the noise already. And then they're going to put a permanent housing around it the next couple of weeks. So they were very responsive. And I got back, and several citizens approached, gave their appreciation, and I relayed that to the chicken plant this morning. Actually, it was yesterday morning.
Was this the subject of Lewis's earlier email?
Yes, ma'am.
And his new best friend.
All right. Thank you, sir. Any other new business? All right, under the County Manager's portion, there is a proposal and award for Northwest Harris Business Park signs. Greg?
As you know, the Development Commission has been wanting to put some more appropriate signs in the Northwest Harris Business Park for some time. They started out with some signs that were a bit of a grander scale, and we needed to work with the city of West Point to get them into formance with their sign regulations, which we did. Then they went out for bids. The sign is, has the county logo up top and the Northwest Harris Business Park across it, and then it has spaces for, I believe, twelve businesses?
Yes.
And then it's on a rock base, and then we'll fight away and eliminate it. And we had three responses to the request for proposals, with the Sky State of Columbus, Georgia, coming in lowest at thirty-five thousand seven hundred fifty-one dollars. The Development Authority has recommended them for an award proposal.
Do you have a written record of this sign?
Yes, ma'am. I'll send it to you. I did, I did. I can pass it to you.
Is it wood, same length?
Stone.
The whole sign?
No, well, the base is stone, and then it's, I don't know what material, if it's stuck over. And then it's metal across the middle, and then it's more ornate up top.
What's your question, sign?
It's about a twelve or fourteen footer. It's a size sign.
Tall, yeah. The city of West Point worked with us a little bit on that, this kind of exceeds their limits, but they did let us go up a little bit more. We had hoped to have a front lit, but they do not allow that, so we will have to have it front lit. That will allow us to get rid of the individual company signs that have been put on the corners there. And we'll have our, these, these are two signs that will be at the two entrances on Highway 103. There will probably be a third sign ordered shortly that will be on the Davidson Road entrance.
Will the sign be front and back?
Two-sided.
Two-sided.
What we're doing is the median, where the divided area in the middle, it'll sit there, so it'll be out and be more visible, that'll set back so it doesn't block visibility. But that way, we can do the landscaping we were looking at doing on the sides, so it's going to be win-win all the way around.
What's the question with size of the sign that will have the company's names on it?
I don't think they're a foot high, so they're decent size, so you can actually read them.
Yeah. The rendering analysis, you will have those dimensions on there.
I know the Development Authority was trying to get something, since it is a state highway and the speed limit is fifty-five, and they wanted it big enough so that people going by could be able to read the sign and see who was there. And along with that, it's nice that Megan is here. West Point, she will be contacting each one of the companies in the business park, getting from them in writing the way they would like their name to appear on the sign. So we will have that, and we give that to the manufacturer. I would entertain a motion.
I would like that motion that we accept, and the sign is a control of this Georgia to thirty-five thousand seven hundred fifty-one dollars.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any other discussion on that? Oh, I will say this, and I can't describe it exactly, Greg and Nancy did a pretty good job. They had two or three renderings that the Development Authority looked at, and they felt this was the nicest one of those three. It does show the Harris County logo and everything. So I think it's going to be something much better, certainly much better than what we have out there.
A quick question, the funds are coming out of what?
Development.
It's coming from the Development Authority budget. All right, any other discussion? All in favor, say if I raise my hand. Motion carries. Next is the Oak Mountain Bridge proposal. Greg?
This is actually needed to come back to you, because we had it approved for no more than ten thousand dollars. What the discussions were with the firms that we talked to didn't talk about the sandblasting and painting that's required, which is much more than the steelwork. So they came back, Comanche Construction came in low bid with those proposals that are the same folks that did the Mayo Bridge. And I would recommend, and this is the bridge that school buses can't go across and have to take the long way around. So I would recommend Comanche Construction do that, and they would, can you have it turned around in just a couple of weeks, simply give them the go-ahead.
Can be completed?
Yeah, the big thing is the sandblasting and painting, the welding, doesn't take very long at all. And then they have to repaint it. I think it's in your question.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
And it always worries me, when someone gives a estimate like this for twenty-five thousand. Do you have any idea, any idea about Comanche Construction?
Yes, and they did the, they did the bridge on Mayo, and they were, they were very good to work with.
They did a good job.
And they were good to work with, too. And they've been, they've been, what I've had other bridge questions, I've been able to call them and ask them things. They just seem to be very authoritative and know what the heck they're talking about. But they also told me it's going to cost ten thousand dollars. I just forgot, I didn't ask the right question.
All right, do I have a motion?
I'll move that we accept the award of Comanche Construction, give twenty-five thousand for the improvement of Mount Ridge.
And I'm sure.
All right, motion second discussion, any more discussion? All in favor, please say if I raise my hands. Motion carries.
And these funds are coming forward?
Such a demand, it's going to have to come from road funds.
All right, next is the airport beacon. Greg?
Nancy, did you give them any page for that?
No, I just gave them the process.
Okay. We had three folks for the, actually, we weren't sure where it was going to hit as far as prices, so we went ahead and put it on the agenda, but all of them actually came below the spending threshold. The low, low bid was Trinity Electrical, who's already on site doing the taxiway lights, so they didn't have mobilization costs, so therefore you would think they'd come in cheaper, which they did. They came in at ninety-two hundred and forty-six dollars. And the important factor about, we could repair the beacon, but it's old, and we would actually not be able, if you repair it, you're not eligible for FAA money, but if you replace it, you are, go figure. But anyhow, so we would spend this money today, but it's eligible for reimbursement on down the line. So I would recommend to you, and by the way, the beacon's out, which is a safety cabinet, so it's noted right now. And if you have any questions, Bill, listen in the audience, if you have any additional questions on the, on the beacon. But we would recommend to you that we awarded to Trinity Electrical for ninety-two hundred and forty-six dollars.
Do we know what the turnaround time is for the replacement?
Real quick, because we have.
Yes, that's right.
I think it probably is about two weeks.
And any possible, any costal idea on reimbursement when that might be, sit down the road, have forehand.
We get a hundred and fifty thousand dollars per year. So we can, depending on what projects you have out there, we could potentially pull it out next year's money. This year's money is dedicated to the taxiway.
All the other bid amounts?
The other bid amounts, now that I buried it, was, were eleven thousand five hundred and thirteen thousand seven hundred and seventy-eight, all from Georgia companies.
Where's Trinity Electric coming from?
They are out of Baxley, but like I said, they're here on site, so they don't have to mobilize.
Baxley, Georgia.
Yes, sir.
Down Southwest.
Southwest.
I'll make a recommendation, we go ahead and approve the bid for Trinity Electric for nine thousand two hundred and thirty dollars.
On second.
Motion in a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, please say if I raise my hand. Motion carries. Anything else, Greg?
No, sir, that's all I have this evening.
All right. Next portion is the, is the County Manager, County Attorney, John Taylor. And he's got a couple of agreements to bring before us.
Yes, sir. I have another complaint that I wanted to raise with you, but it's kind of put blinking now. So I would like to have this light fixed before the next meeting, because it's about driving me crazy, blinking on and off.
All right.
It's come on, half of it is now, so either way, just fix the other half, and it'll be all right. There are two proposals for you that I have already circulated to you. One of them is for a industry that's coming in the Northwest Harris Business Park. And it is Desol Materials, which is a part of, Desol, which is already out there in the park, they're going to be building a, another facility that will, in two phases. The first, the total of both of the phases would be thirty-five million, and they're going to employ approximately one-hundred and ten employees. The first phase is eighteen million, and there'd be sixty employees, and they will start on that right way. Then Phase Two would be the bounce of it, there with an additional fifty employees. The property is in the Northwest Harris Business Park, it would be adjacent to their own, the property they own now. The, there's some tax obscenities that you have given to them, as well as some, as well as to other industries that have been located in the park. That is, the property abatement, Phase One, of course, will be, will be an abatement that will run for a period of, the first three years will be one hundred percent, and then the fourth year will be a hundred percent, and then another four years after that, I mean, the fifty percent the fourth year, and then the remaining four years will be also going to be at fifty percent. Phase Two will be the same way. Most of your tax abatements have run in the area of eight to ten years, and usually the first two or three years are, are provided, are at a hundred percent. And of course, you're getting no taxes on the property now, so it is a win-win for everybody, for West Point, for the Board of Education, as well as for you. The state is putting some money into the project, and you also are putting some great cost in, in site preparation and the cost as well. But I recommend this to you for approval. The agreement was, was, was signed today, subject to and contingent upon your approval of it, the approval of the city of West Point, the approval of the tax, Board of Tax Assessors, as well as the Harris County Board of, Board of Education. And the, I recommend this to you before your approval.
All right, we entertain a motion.
I move that we approve this agreement. Yes, ma'am.
Motion in a second. Any discussion?
No question. Do we anticipate any issue with all the other signatures?
No.
No.
The Development Authority's already signed off on it. And no, West Point was there today, their mayor signed it, the, we've already provided them, they reviewed it, and I don't think there's going to be any sort of problems.
Let's give you a little, little further background of that, too. This is something we've been working on for about ten months. As you well know, we talked about it on a few occasions, the possibility, and all of a sudden, everything was on for a couple of weeks ago, and then it was delayed, and then all of a sudden, it just came together over the weekend, actually. Taylor was working on contract Saturday to put in the changes. We did have a closing today. They were most appreciative of being able to continue to call Northwest Harris Business Park home. It, the, an interesting point that the chairman made today, this Phase One will supply their plants in our business park in Hopewell, Alabama, which is below Montgomery, and in Mexico, three plants, we supply those three plants. And they're also letting additional business with the extension to get into some of the American manufacturing, automobile manufacturing. But the chairman made the point, he said, here's a case where we are bringing, we used to buy this from Asia, and this is something, now we're bringing jobs and some capital investment back to the United States for this. So it's a pre-encumbered that is doing that for us. So they will be supplying at least to the United States, to the United States place in Mexico, out of manufacturing. So they've been, they've really, they've been good to work with. Certainly, climate's changed since there, they were the first occupant, the first key supplier occupant in the business park. We've worked very, very closely with them. We recall they had a fire a few years ago that acted, fortunately, they expanded and had a firewall between the original section and the new section. The firewall held, so within the rest of the plant was totally gone. And within four months, they had it backed up and operated out of the plant. So they, they feel like that West Point, Harris County have helped them immensely through some of those difficulties, in particular that. So they actually, they're putting a lot into this, because we are not putting in as much as we did in the first one. But they're happy to do that. Actually, they gave us some dates today. They'll have their drawings completed as far as the placement on the property, no later than April the 7th. And then within two to three weeks, their contractor will start work on the plant. It will be open, or sometime, sometime in the first half of 2017.
So those first two weeks in April, public... So those first two weeks of April, public works may be a little bit stretched. They may not get a couple of approvals, Bill, but you may.
One other thing that I thought was very significant that Chairman Quan said today was that he expressed his appreciation for the relationship with the county, but he also said that he wasn't just wanting to come back and be in Harris County. He wanted to have a presence where our Commissioner Lyon was, because of his deep respect for Commissioner Lyon. And I think that says a lot for what you have done and accomplished there, and we all very appreciate it.
Thank you. And the chairman and I just get it out real well with the first one, it's been a very good relationship.
Do you speak Korean?
Very few words, very few words. Unfortunately, I don't know enough of it, so that when we're sitting there at the negotiating table, they feel quite free to start speaking Korean and I have no idea what they're talking about. I ought to learn maybe, but it's not letting me.
You may not know that.
That's true, too. Any other discussion on this? I do want to thank, apologize to and thank the other commissioners while it was not a surprise that we were doing this. It was something that kind of came up with the finalization very, very quickly and we had to email a copy of the contract to them. It did fall within our parameters that we established. They were very, very quick to do so, working with the folks in West Point to have their agreement on the items that involved West Point. And then I guess the most difficult was working with the State of Georgia. But they did come in with some money, too, and some other incentives. It was a real team effort and I appreciate everybody doing that. I apologize to the commissioners for not giving you notice, but I think the chairman, chairman said he was coming over Saturday and he wanted to sign it on Tuesday. That's what we did.
I got my first email Saturday morning about eight o'clock. AM.
After I talked to a property about 9:30 or 10:00 Friday night, so. Anyway, okay, we have a motion in a second. All in favor, please see if I raise my hand. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, the second thing...
Before you leave that, Andy, if you'll get me after me and give you a little more details, the Koreans specifically said they did not want a big splash, but obviously we have to do a press release from the state standpoint. We will have some pictures that will be coming in and maybe there's a couple on there that we might be able to follow. I think we can do something locally and be fine. Okay, sorry, Tom.
Thank you, sir. The second item is an airport corporate hangar. I forward this to you also for your review and approval. There is CSG Aviation, which is, I believe they're based in Columbus, is going to lease a hangar at the Harris County Airport. The warrant is being constructed and then there are some additions to it. But it will be over a 10-year lease at the rate of $31,200 per year in hangar rent. And it will become available, they'll start paying rent on the 15th of, which is today, or the day the paving of the runway is completed and they can have access to the hangar. They're committing to, for this, during this 10 years, they're committing to bring their, all their, a part of their aircraft operation up here and locate at least eight aircraft with nine employees on site. And then I think they have about 20 pilots that are gone silent, three of the states will be flying in and out. The lease is similar to the other leases that you've used in the airport. There will also be a fuel purchase obligation. They will purchase approximately 8,000 gallons of aviation fuel per month at a cost above your, at a number of 35 cents a gallon above your cost. And for any month they fall below that, they will, are going to make up that shortfall on a ninety-day basis. So I think the lease is, as far as, I can understand, the president of the company told me Friday that they were, in fine, they were going to get it out. I understand that they were still looking at that. So I think you can, I would recommend that you go ahead and approve it as is and then we'll see where it goes from there. But I think for the general concept, I think we're good.
I'm going to take a motion.
I'll take the motion that we accept the CSG Aviation.
All right, thank you, ma'am.
I'll say it.
We have a little, in a second, discussion. I would like to add just a little bit more to, Taylor mentioned that the lease at $2,600 a month would be $31,200 a year. The gasoline, which is guaranteed to us even if they don't use it, so they will still pay us our profit we would have made, that will equate to $33,600 a year. So that the total income just from the rent and from the gasoline will be $64,800 a year. There will also be some additional taxes because they're just going to be a repair facility, they repair all of their charter planes here. So they will be in and we will be getting taxes off of the sales taxes and whatnot, off of those parts. And then of course, while they're here, they'll be spending some time, spending money around town. Just the, with the gasoline and the rent itself means the payback is 5.83 years and it's a 10-year lease. So this works very favorably to us. The hangar is ours, and so should they ever go away, then we have that hangar to do with. We already actually had some interest in folks using it on short trips here, just to hope to keep their planes undercover. Bill is, I know he's drumming up business and seeing who else we can get up here. So hopefully we'll have someone else fairly soon.
There'll be 11 aircraft in Kenneway.
11 aircraft, 10 more. Those employees are here in this area anyway, but some of them are Harris County's. But still, it's employees here in the county. May well end up with a couple of their aircraft based here, which then we get out of the law of taxes. All right, any other discussion on that? All in favor of the motion, please see if I raise my hand. Motion carries. Thank you. Good week for Harris County and our three things we continue. And of course, what's really important to the citizens is that these do bring in taxes. And the Harris County Business Park, both with the school board and for the Harris County operations themselves, it does bring in taxes. We do have some employees there that live in the county. It's somewhere, it's not a lot, somewhere in the range of 10, 15% that are Harris County residents. So, you know, we kind of get the benefit of taxes, but we don't have the kids at our school. So it really is a true benefit to us. And we are, we are already benefiting from Vahon and from Johnson Patrols as far as taxes coming in on a year basis. I think this bodes well for Harris County and we have two or three other folks that have expressed an interest in the Harris County Business Park. We are continuing to work with this for time. I mean, it's good. It's a good way to have our second meeting in the courts. Anyone, anything else, John?
Yes, sir, I think there's need to go into session for, to discuss potential threat and/or pending litigation.
And some personnel.
All right, I'll take that motion, if I have a second.
Second.
All right. All in favor? Motion carries. Yes, that is it, I believe, thank you, buddy. Thank you.